Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of scrutiny, the time is 6pm. This meeting is being held under the regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to the Covid-19 situation. My name is councillor Caroline Brook, I'm chairperson of this scrutiny committee. And before we begin, there are a few housekeeping reminders to run through as there are new working practices in response to the regulations. First of all, please can I ask everybody present in the virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted? And your cameras turned off while you are not addressing the meeting. It will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. Please can I also advise that the open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. And in addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Members and officers where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function of the meeting to indicate that you wish to speak or raise a point of order or explanation, and I'll invite you to then speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, therefore I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible. When speaking and referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or paragraph number that you are addressing. Thank you. Please note the duration of this virtual meeting, it's planned to be two hours. I'm aware we have a very large agenda this evening, so I'd like if possible, you all to keep your comments and questions as concise as possible. So we try and get through it in a reasonable amount of time. If members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me through the chat functions? And I'll announce to the meeting that you are to leave the meeting. Please can I ask the Democratic Services Office to undertake a roll call of members of scrutiny to confirm who was present this evening? Matthew?
Chair, and good evening, members. Members, if you don't mind unmuting your microphones and I'll just do a very quick roll call in alphabetical order, please. Councillor Brook?
Present.
Councillor Becker? Councillor Becker? Okay, I'll come back to councillor Becker.
Sorry, I am here, present.
Thank you.
Finding the mute button.
Councillor Brook?
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Crask?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Hiscok?
Yes, I'm present.
Councillor Hall?
Good evening, yes, I'm present.
Councillor Power?
Good evening, I'm present, thank you.
Councillor Lumby?
Don't I give alphabetically come before, doesn't L come before P in the alphabet anymore? Never mind. And of course, I'm very happy to go behind Margo at all times, so that's fine as well.
Thank you. Councillor Scott? I think councillor Scott's having some trouble with his speakers, Chair, he's given me a quick message, so we'll come back to councillor Scott. And councillor Weir?
Hello, I'm present.
That's all members of the committee, present Chair, with the exception of councillor Scott, which we'll go and sort out. Chair, while I've got my, do you want me to run through which officers and other members are in the meeting?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We've got a number of officers with us this evening, we've got Laura Taylor, Chief Executive, Richard Botham, Strategic Director of Services, Lisa Curtin, Strategic Director of Resources, Liz Keys, Corporate Head of Resources, Darren Kennedy, Finance Manager, Strategic Finance, Neil Aitken, Finance Manager, Capital and Treasury, Amy Traner, Service Lead, Transformation Kearman, Simon Howson, Senior Policy and Transformation Manager, Dick Johnson, Finance and Resources Manager, and Rob Saffers from Hampshire County Council. Other members on the call, Chair, I've seen councillor Cutler, councillor Lerni, councillor Evans, councillor Murphy, councillor Clear, councillor Thompson, and councillor Todd. Apologies if I missed anybody off that list, just, but I think that's everybody. Finally, Chair, we're going to be joined by Monica Gill and David Light from TACT. Monica called me a few minutes before the meeting, she's having a lot of trouble with her internet connection this evening. So she will carry on trying to join, but she did just want to make us aware that she was trying to join. And finally, Chair, she did mention that she'd, that TACT had been briefed on the two items on the agenda related to the HRA paper and reference to the Osbornes. And she said that basically TACT were both in agreement with those papers. But she did hope to join us later on.
Did she wish to speak, Matthew, or was that the only update she wished to give?
I think if she manages to join, she may want to say a few words, yeah. And also, Mr. Light might want to say a few words, too.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, Matthew. So that brings us on to my item one of the agenda, so as we have heard, we're all here, aside from councillor Scott, who's struggling, so Matthew will go and sort that out. So no apologies this evening. Do we have any declarations of interests?
Yes.
Any disclosures? Councillor Hiscok?
Yeah, I'd like to declare a personal non-perceval interest concerning items upon the agenda that may be related to my role as a county councillor.
Thank you. I saw another hand go up, whose hand was it?
It's mine, Chair.
Councillor Scott, there you are.
I'm back in, so I couldn't hear you, so I came back out and came back in.
Thank you, councillor Scott, welcome.
I can hear your dogs at tones. I'd like to declare on item nine, Chair, when it comes to the housing revenue account budget that I'm a lovely council tenant and very proud of. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Scott, and welcome to the meeting. I don't have any announcements this evening. So we come on to minutes of the meeting of the 25th of November 2020, pages five to eight of our agenda pack. Is everybody in agreement that these are a true representation of what happened on the evenings of 25th of November? Agreed.
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 Thank you. I believe that's still so that we don't have any public participation tonight, Matthew?
Yes, that's correct, no public participation.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us on to item six of the agenda, the general fund budget 2021/22, scrutiny report reference SC040, for cabinet report reference CAB3289. There's a recommendation on page nine that the committee comment on the proposals within the cabinet report. And I believe we're handing over to Darren Kennedy, is that right, Mr. Kennedy?
Sorry, Chair, it might be Mr. Botham, apologies.
Mr. Botham, you're going to introduce this for us this evening, I believe, then.
I think councillor Cutler was actually going to introduce it.
Okay, councillor Cutler. Maybe you could do it together.
Well, yeah, I didn't really want to jump in, you know, Chair, but there we go. Committee, the scrutiny committee's purpose, this paper updates the cabinet paper from December 2020, 3276, which highlighted the financial pressures due to Covid and showed a forecast deficit of 3.7 million pounds. This paper updates the position in the light of the government spending settlement, review settlement, and also shows progress in the work to reduce the operating costs and includes proposals to ensure a balanced budget while supporting delivery of the council plan. The government funding settlement includes provision for additional council tax hardship support and for Covid-related costs and with other funding helps reduce the deficit from 3.7 million to 3 million pounds. The earlier paper identified savings of 3 million pounds, which were described in that paper and described in this paper. And we proposed making all these savings as set out in appendix B. These are staff changes resulting in saving of 1.1 million, operational non-staff savings resulting in 1.3 million, and other additional savings of nearly 650,000 pounds. The base budget assumed a 3% increase in council tax, which we recommend. And this would result in a 4.29 increase on band D. The proposals provide for a balanced budget based on a reduction in income of 20% in the next year. As I've stated many times, this is subject to a huge potential variance compared with a normal year. And it is important that we monitor this closely through the year. And I think there is a high chance that we'll need a revision of the budget at some point during the year. I'm happy to take questions. Chair.
Thank you councillor Cutler, much appreciated. Mr. Botham, was there anything you'd like to add to that before we begin?
Nothing significant to add to that, Chair, the government settlement did bring in and just short of an additional 500,000 to help us with Covid-related costs in the next year as well. So the report does recommend that we set aside a budget now and retain the rest in reserves for when we do it throughout the year. But that's a very positive change compared to the report that we brought in December. But apart from that, no other comments, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. Okay, so we'll come on to questions, so do we have any questions? Matthew, are you happy to monitor the chat for me?
Yes, no problem, Chair, and councillor Lumby is first up.
Councillor Lumby, straight to you then, please.
Thank you, Chair, although councillor Power would like to go first, that's obviously absolutely fine. Not as open, okay, I'll go to go then. Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Botham for the input and for the officers for the report. Can I ask just a very few simple questions upfront? Firstly, this doesn't seem like a particularly dramatic sort of rethink. Are there any big wow ideas we should be hearing about here? Or is it pretty much a sort of tinkering proposal? That's the first question. Secondly, can I ask about the proposals in relation to enforcement, or rather, planning in particular in enforcement? There's nothing calling for greater expenditure on enforcement, which is one of the major issues out in the countryside, as councillor Cutler will be extremely aware. And I notice in the schedule, it refers to the fact that there is then about to be a large cut in that department with 3.5 jobs gone within DM or not being filled. With the view that actually, you know, planning is, that it will be on planning and enforcement will be increased. Can I have some indication exactly what is proposed here? Personally, talking to planning officers, they are incredibly stretched at the moment and are creaking and struggling. I notice something which should have gone to planning committee a long time ago, is only just making it to the March meeting, for example. It sounds to me like we actually don't have enough people on the planning side. How many more people are coming into enforcement? Because we really do need a significant investment in that. And I think that's something that I would very much like to understand better. And unfortunately, my screen has clipped off. So my third and important question has just been, oh, can someone please explain to me what play to the crowd is? And why we are giving lots of money to that and reducing the small grants budget? That's all, thank you very much.
Was that you, councillor Cutler, who's responding?
Yeah, I'm quite happy to, on the the final question, I think councillor Porter will have some details, and perhaps Richard Botham could also comment on the planning side of things. In terms of the grants, we have a series of large grants that are made, Play to the Crowd, Theatre Royal and Hat Fair Organisation. We have a series of large grants, most of which are on a three or four, I think, three-year cycle. And Play to the Crowd's cycle ends this year, and so we've proposed a 20% reduction or propose to maintain their grant at 147,000 pounds, which is a reduction. And we propose that those large grants coming for review next year would also see a 20% reduction. In terms of the small grants, that is a different pot and has been undersubscribed for the past two years. And so it would be sensible to, you know, at a time where we're looking for major savings, it would be sensible to reduce that pot by the amount that it's been undersubscribed. Councillor Lumby's first question was saying it was tinkering at the edges. Well, I don't think finding 3 million pounds worth of savings is tinkering at the edges. It is a major significant savings that we've had to make due to the circumstances. And I think we've taken a very balanced approach across the council.
Mr. Botham?
Yeah, happy to pick up on the planning question the councillor Lumby raised. And in 20, in the current year, 2021, we have made a number of changes in the planning team. And we've implemented a reorganisation within that team to strengthen the senior management and to increase the resource in the enforcement team in particular. Quite rightly, councillor Lumby highlighted the fact that the changes proposed in this paper relate to development management team. So we're certainly not proposing any reductions on resources in the enforcement team, which have only just been supplemented by, as I say, an additional senior manager and an additional full-time equivalent as well. And they will still remain a stretched team, there's still a lot of calls on that service. But we do feel that's a measured increase in an area that really was demanding it. The, yeah, as I say, as far as development management is concerned, it is, there are significant demands on that team, albeit they are a large team. And so proportionally, that reduction is in proportion to the others proposed throughout the paper.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. Councillor Porter, did you want to address any of the questions councillor Lumby asked?
Yes, I just, well, I think Mr. Botham has just explained it all, really. But one of the things we have introduced in this year is the pre-application process, which means that the developer can come, whether it's a single household or a larger one, can come and have a conversation about that. And also, we have planning performance agreements, PPAs, in place with our larger developers, which means that they have a service which they agree through a legal process of the cost that will cost them. I think we've just realised that we need to be smarter in our planning responses so that we make the whole planning system cost-effective. And so it's not about slowing it down, but making it smarter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Porter. Do we have any more questions on this one, anybody?
Councillor Hall, Chair?
Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, I have several questions, in particular as they relate to the summary of staff changes. Could I just clarify Mr. Botham's comment, if I may, just before I ask my questions? That you were saying that we were going to put that additional 500,000 pounds into reserves and we were not going to alter the budget as a consequence?
Sorry, Chair, no, the, just to clarify, the proposal in the paper is that we establish an immediate budget of 250,000 pounds funded from that Covid grant money, which gives an immediate ability for us to meet Covid-related pressures. And the remaining 250, just short of 250, would be retained pending us identifying what we need them for. But they're very much set aside and will be used for Covid-related costs if that need arises later in the year.
Thank you for that clarification. So Chair, if I may, I have several questions to ask. As they relate initially to table one, the summary of staff changes. And obviously, in appendix B, that is a considerable amount, over 1.3 million. We already know that the Guildhall staff have been impacted by the change in use and obviously the recent renting out of that facility to the law courts. However, I am concerned to see that we have decided that we can take our heads out of housing. Our outreach service has been much diminished as a consequence. We have a legal duty to the homeless, and yet the outreach service cannot work effectively at this point because we were down to just one person. And the partnership agency agreements, as I understand it, are not in place. So that is concerning because if we don't look after the homeless, we will be not meeting our duties. And I thought that we were all collectively very committed to that. I'm concerned to see that the move of the housing posts into the estates team, despite being reassured, and I'm sure TACT will have a view on this, about the new homes delivery and housing property services continuing to be maintained as is, that actually we should be losing heads in that department. My understanding was that estates were already stretched as a group, but we're planning to take people out of an area where we are again looking to ensure that we have the highest possible standards for our tenants, that we build new homes, that we're all collectively in agreement we should be doing. And therefore, what are the other impacts on the estates team if we're losing headcount there? Likewise, to reiterate councillor Lumby's point, I am concerned to see significant cost savings in planning. If you ask the councillors, certainly on our side of the council, we would say that we are concerned about enforcement. And therefore, can I ask whether we can be reassured that the enforcement team is of appropriate strength? And that the three and a half posts that are being taken out, what is the actual impact on the processes for planning and all that we go through? So there are several questions there relating to headcount on appendix B. I'd like some clarification on, please, Chair, either Mr. Botham or councillor Cutler or whoever would like to address those. Thank you, councillor Brook.
Thank you councillor Hall. Who would like to address that first? Mr. Botham?
Thank you, Chair, I'll try and pick up on each of those points, if I may. The, so I'll just make my notes. Yeah, sorry, the first comment obviously was around the outreach service. And that is an area where the team are looking at how we can deliver that service better. Very much we remain committed to, it's an essential element of addressing homelessness. And we have to maintain that service. The previous outreach officer left the council, and we've seen that as an opportunity to deliver that service in a different way. And we are working with our partners to deliver that service more flexibly than previously, just by having, you know, a single officer doing that, that had its limitations. So it's just really a reassurance to the scrutiny committee that that remains a very high priority. It's a critical element of addressing homelessness. And we will be looking to provide a outreach service throughout a seven-day service, throughout the day, rather than just early morning services like it could become. The comment regarding teams moving to estates, absolutely no intent there to reduce the amount of investment in our housing services. No reduction in the new homes team, in fact, when the development strategy proposals come forward, that's likely to come forward with an ask for additional resource. It's more about all of the council's property expertise being brought together to share, to make sure that they're learning from each other. And benefiting that, so we have, as an example, we have a very comprehensive asset management RT system in housing. We don't have one in the corporate estates team. Well, bringing them together, we get the advantages of sharing of that expertise. But in saying that, those staff that are funded from the HRA remain funded from the HRA. And the HRA ring fence means that they have to deliver services to our council tenants. And again, it's just an assurance to members that this takes absolutely nothing away from the housing service. It's paid for by, the staff that are paid for by HRA will remain delivering services to housing residents and customers. Certainly, with the plan, I want to just reiterate my previous point on the enforcement service has been strengthened. The changes within planning is around the processing of applications. And councillor Porter obviously referenced the changes in systems that have been brought out there. Another one of those posts not replaced was actually a post that never was part of the restructure that we implemented, that we determined not to bring forward. So it's not someone being made redundant, it's a post brought forward as part of the restructure that we decided, that we, in liaison with the IT team, the IT team will support the planning team to deliver good systems, rather than having a single dedicated member of staff that becomes a potential point of, a potential single point of failure. So that's the thinking behind that. But the reassurance there, again, as far as enforcement is concerned, we're increasing resource, they're not taking it away.
Thank you.
Does that answer your questions, councillor Hall?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Councillor Lumby?
Sorry, Chair, just to jump in there, just to let you know, we've got councillor Weir, councillor Crask and councillor Lumby.
Then I shall let that councillor come last, as you've already spoken.
I'm very happy to sit back behind the queue, that's no problem.
Okay, councillor Weir first then, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Hopefully, this is just a quick one, I wanted to pick up with councillor Porter. She mentioned that with larger developers, they have special service agreements that they pay out extra for. Could you just clarify, do staff working on these in the plant, in the development management team, do they keep a record of time that they spend on working with developers on larger agreements? Thank you.
Yes, so for example, on the nationally significant infrastructure project, any officer that's taking part in that consultation and process does keep a record. There are a variety of different ways those are done, but through legal agreements, they can either be done by the hour or a fixed fee.
Councillor Crask?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple of questions there, if I may, and apologies for banging on about the planning department. But just so I understand how we're making the savings in that space? Because this is obviously something that I am particularly focused on. Am I hearing efficiency gains, are planning officers able to do their job in a different way? And so they're going to be getting it done quicker? Is that what I'm hearing? And deferring to the planning application process, which in itself should be revenue generating and should, you know, cover some of that cost to some degree? So is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, the, Chairman, may I speak? Of course, councillor Porter. Thank you. Just that the planning fees are set by government, so they can't be varied and we can't increase them or decrease them as we wish. So that's a set fee. But we have introduced the pre-planning conversations, and they are formal and minuted. So that means that there is a charge for that, which is set by us. We hope therefore to be covering a lot of the points that would be covered in the main planning applications at that point. So that it means that when the planning application does come in, it has the clarity that we need, and we're not going backwards and forwards. So if a process requires more and more answers, at the moment, it's all covered in that same fixed planning fee, which the government has. And we, over the last year, we have been changing developers so that they now believe it is better to come in and have that pre-application conversation. That's just one of the efficiencies, and Mr. Botham might like to describe some others.
Thank you Chair. Can I ask a second question unrelated?
One moment, one moment councillor Crask. Mr Botham, did you want to respond to that previous question?
Nothing much to add to what councillor Porter was saying, obviously that the development management team are constantly looking for ways to streamline their service and the pre-app process is the key element of that. But the changes also around the strengthening of the senior management in the team is also helping with an increased focus on performance. They're doing, we're investing more in managers sort of reviewing where processes are not working so well, on reporting performances through not only to ourselves but to parish councils as well. And we see that as quite critical, as maintaining that transparent process. But also making sure that the focus is on delivering within key performance targets as well.
Thank you Mr Botham. Councillor Crask, by all means, ask a second question.
Thank you Chair and thank you both for the answer which gave me some satisfaction for sure. I think my second question goes to page 20, point 12.3. And just to comment councillor Cutler made in terms of, there's a fair chance of a review of the budget needed. I think there's some assumptions made in 12.3 around losses being well in excess or, you know, not an assumption necessarily, but an observation that income losses may well be in excess of 20%. An assumption around government intervention being available and assumption around government intervention being distributed evenly across all councils. You can imagine that those councils that haven't managed to deliver balanced budgets might need more support than those councils that have. So I think there's some downside risks that I can see here. So just wondering what there might be and what thoughts there might be around managing any further downside risks?
Thank you councillor Crask. Yeah, I have been sort of banging on about this for quite a while, about the fact that we actually have a greater risk of variance of our estimate on income compared with the normal year. In a normal year, the variance is likely to be fairly small on income, whereas there is so much uncertainty in these unique circumstances that although the 20% is a very good estimate and the finance team worked in a fair bit of detail to find a good position or the correct position to pitch the budget, there is potential for huge variance and it could go either way, let's remember that. By us making the full savings within this 20%, within the budget we're working on, the 20% income drop, it does leave us some flexibility in using reserves if income falls to a greater extent. But obviously if it's severe, a severe impact, a 30% reduction in income would have created a £5 million gap rather than the £3 million gap and it would not be wise to work on reserves there. But one of the things that we found throughout the year, I mean, at the moment, we have, for example, the co-payment 75% on fees, on reduction in income from fees, i.e. car parking and our other fees and charges, only runs till the end of June. If circumstances are causing a greater loss than predicted and the recovery taking a lot longer, there is a likelihood that government will extend some of those things. So I'm not saying that we have to depend on that because, as I say, we have some flexibility with reserves and it's also very, very important that we, you know, we are monitoring very, very closely so we know where we're going. But if we come to a point where we have to do a second budget, we will have to look for more savings. I mean, there is no doubt about that. Whether that is, and I think within that, there is a matter of whether we say, well, this is, and again, it'll be a judgment as to whether this is a one-off and therefore we can save or defer one-off expenditure, or whether we need more of the fundamental long-term savings that we have put into this budget. So I think, I can't tell you what it is we would be looking at, but I think it's this balance between whether we feel that this is a one-off event. Now, in this budget, we're saying it's not a one-off event because we knew, well, it is a one-off event in terms of the 20% reduction in income, but we also had the longer term problem of a medium term financial strategy showing deficits, not as great as the deficits were when we first took power. And last year's budget did deal with a lot of that medium term financial strategy deficit problem. But by taking long-term savings out of the system at this stage, we address the medium term financial strategy. One of the judgments will have to be if the income reductions are worse than we expected, as to whether that has significant knock-on over time effects. So therefore, we want cumulative reductions or whether we can save on one-off expenditure or use of reserves, because both of those are things, you know, you can only do it once, whereas, you know, sort of cuts in staffing or reduction in staffing and efficiency savings are cumulative. So it's finding that balance when we get to that stage. I don't think we're being, we're certainly not being complacent about the possibility that the things will be significantly, change significantly. Of course, what we also want to be able to do is be in a position that if income projections, we are being too pessimistic and they're better than we think, that we haven't reduced our services to such an extent that we can't recover quickly. Because it's important that council's in a position to help the recovery across the piece and across the district. So if we reduce too much, I think there is a danger that we won't be in a position to recover. So it's finding that balance and I think this budget strikes a good balance. Some difficult decisions and, you know, the questions obviously relate to those difficulties and we have had to make a range of difficult decisions because it is a huge level of savings. So I hope that answers it. You know, we are aware, we are aware of the risks. I mean, the risks aren't just in income, the risks are also some additional expenses if lockdown goes on. So, you know, they're both sides and we need to be monitoring all those all the time.
Thank you councillor Cutler. So for questions, I have Lumby, Brock, Horrell, Power. So if there's anybody that hasn't indicated, then please do so now.
I think Weir would be, I think.
I'm coming to you councillor Lumby next.
I thought councillor Weir was ahead of me.
Councillor Weir already asked a question.
Oh, did she? Oh golly. That's me not paying full enough attention of them. Apologies councillor Weir.
Come on councillor Lumby, your turn.
All right, okay, thank you. Can I ask about bins? I received today through the door, two of these, they seem to be out of focus. They seem to be leaflets propagandising about the bins with some curious, I mean, to be truthful, there are other clinch worthy documents with comments like, "You clip, we collect", and "Garden waste collection is now really easy". Could I please understand at times budget taking straight, how much this costs to produce? Staff time, delivery costs, production costs? Where's the money coming from for this? And are we going to do it again? Because I do think it's a curious use of funds. Secondly, can I ask, on the basis that the document says that all charges are increasing except for car parking, are we increasing further the charges for the new bins? The £39, £59, are they going up? Because on the basis that only car park was excluded, I'm assuming they are. And are we taking account of the fact that many people are finding it extremely difficult to meet the new charge, particularly in straitened times that we are in? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lumby.
I'm sure councillor Todd can add plenty of detail on the bins, but there was a budget for communication on the new bins and I think if councillor Lumby had been paying attention, he'd have realised that his postman had put that through his door. So the costs there, he obviously just thought you needed to.
Yeah, but it will have a cost for the Royal Mail to deliver. So the fact that it was one or two, there will be delivery costs with it.
That was part of the budget of the process to include communication there, I think. I don't think, in terms of fees and charges, we're not proposing an increase in the bin charge, that does not come into the schedule of fees and charges. Both car parking, car parking would have come into that schedule and that's why we've pointed out that it is an exception to the average increase in fees and charges. The fees and charges paper will come to cabinet later with the details. I think we're sort of straying off the point when we're talking about funding for something that is in this year rather than in the future budget. So I don't want to get too detailed into this, but I'm sure councillor Todd can add something to it.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Councillor Todd, did you want to add anything briefly to this?
Yeah, no, I'm very happy to. Obviously, if we're launching a new service, we need to tell people about it. And we have spent money to make sure that residents know about it. We have not individually postly addressed these leaflets. We've used a service provided by Royal Mail called door-to-door delivery, which normally costs, I mean, I don't know the exact figure, this is something I know from my political knowledge, about £6 a door. Doing the entire district is around £4,000, I think. Otherwise known as getting another 100 people to sign up for a bin. So if you deliver 55,000 leaflets and 100 people extra sign up for a bin, you've paid for the leaflet. In practice, we signed up around 350 people yesterday, on the day that the bin, the leaflet arrived. So by about lunchtime, we'd paid for the entire leaflet to the entire district with the extra people signed up for the service. In terms of the charges as been mentioned, there is no intention to increase the charge. And, you know, the, I can't, I'm trying to remember how many of the, how many subscriptions or people signed up for the service. I told councillor Brooke in answer to her question, I think it was at full council, I think at the time, had we signed up around, was it 5,000? I'm just looking it up now. Anyway, I can tell you that as of this morning, we've signed up 10,420 people and it looks as if we will hit our, sorry, we had sold 6,448 on the 12th of January. As of this morning, we'd sold 10,420. I think we sold over 300 on Monday. That's 1,000 every three days. If we carry on at this rate, then certainly by the end of the month, we will have set the targets that were written in the original paper. And having a marketing programme to make people aware of the bin service and how they can sign up for it was going to be part of that. I can't spend, I can't speak for councillor Lumby's experience as a corporate lawyer, but I spent 15 years working for Procter and Gamble as a marketing director.
Councillor Todd, I don't think working for a gamble...
I know quite a lot about launching new products, cost effectiveness.
Right, could I come to councillor Brooke please?
Thank you Chair. My question is again on page 31, this time on transformation, the text halfway down the table. Makes reference to no immediate impact on services. I assume possibly because three of the staff have referred to are at risk and have not formally been deleted from the staff complement. So my question is, if those staff are lost, is there an impact and what is the nature of it? And can we have a little bit of elaboration on what the revised approach is to see whether or not some of those impacts are mitigated by some of the other service improvements being referred to in other areas? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brooke. Who's best to answer this, Mr Botham or is it Mr Taylor?
I'm happy to answer and Mrs Kirkman may wish to add something to tomorrow's. And the reason that the report says that there's an immediate impact on services, by that comment means by way of frontline services, this isn't a frontline team, it is a team that have been working on trying to identify ways of achieving efficiencies in services, transforming the way frontline services are delivered. And it hasn't been as effective as we had hoped and there are a number of schemes. So we are focusing on the digital transformation, we are focusing on working with the frontline teams to identify ways in which they can improve their services directly themselves, rather than having a support team coming in and reviewing that and testing. So effectively, that team hadn't achieved the level of efficiencies that we had originally hoped, targeted for it, sort of posed it as to identify a different way. We've yet to finalise a revised transformation programme, but that is something that we are currently working on. Like I said, we're very much focused on digital transformation as well.
Thank you Mr Botham. Councillor Horrell?
Thank you Chair. Two questions. One is regarding the Guildhall, which is obviously identified in the papers and we obviously have a limited agreement with the law courts. What are the assumptions built into the budget, given that the Guildhall has a significant impact in terms of its overall numbers? And secondly, can I better understand please, why we have decided not to continue with the asset review? Because obviously that impacts the longer term revenue and income opportunities for the council. And I don't really understand from this paper what the thinking is on making such a significant change and the impact that that will deliver. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Horrell. Who would like to respond to this one?
The paper does make assumptions around income generation, that the Guildhall continues to be an income generating asset for the council. The current agreement is time limited, but the estates team are reviewing options at the moment for what happens beyond the time of the current arrangements. When we brought forward the paper beforehand, we identified that we didn't see there being a longer term future, a future in the facilitated hiring that we had previously delivered through the Guildhall, particularly whilst we're facing social distancing pressures. However, as an asset to hire, it is still something that will bring income to the council. So those assumptions are included within the paper. With regard to councillor Horrell's comments about the asset review, I don't think there is any proposals to not continue the asset review. The review of asset management is a key part of the medium term financial strategy. The review of asset management is a key part of the medium term financial strategy and remains that. And I would agree. I mean, how we make best use of our assets to generate income is an essential element of the of the strategy moving forward. And that review will continue.
Thank you, Mr Botham. One final question, councillor Power.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Cutler referred to the potential for variance in both income and expenditure over the next financial year. I would like to ask if we have the processes in place for monitoring both income and expenditure on a presumably monthly basis, without that very process becoming burdensome to staff who are already under a great deal of stress doing what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Power. The finance team have really pulled out the stops all year. I mean, we've been monitoring since since the first lockdown fairly closely, which is why we were in a position to effectively bring in an emergency budget in September, which has balanced the books fully, it looks like. And one can never say absolutely for sure, but looks very much as if we will we will not have a shortfall at the end of this year. I think, in a way, it's one of those, one of those great examples of, you know, a crisis bringing out new processes and through need. And monitoring is probably tighter than it's ever been. We will continue with that. The the full details of it, I can't give you right right now, but it has been very effective. The staff, you know, and it I will have to say, the staff throughout the council have been magnificent during this crisis. And that includes a lot of the backroom staff that we don't see, you know, who who have really pulled out the stops. And and actually managing the finances this year has been probably more difficult than it's ever been. And and our finance team have done a magnificent job. And we will continue to make sure that they do. Richard might be able to give a little bit more detail about the actual processes, but.
Chair, if that's okay, I was just about to, just going to add that clearly the the finance team are have been extremely tenacious in making sure that we've got extremely tight monitoring systems for income. But it isn't just them, as councillor Cutler just said, the the parking team monitored their income weekly. We know exactly the money we poured in last week from the car parks. It wasn't enough, obviously. But but so so they're doing their bit. And the estates team are all over commercial rents at the moment. And and actually, a lot of the work that they've done has ensured that we've sustained our tenants over time when we were at risk of losing some. They've made really good relationships with them, which is a key part of monitoring how effective that rental income is.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one small point to make to finish with. Councillor Cutler, you mentioned about reducing the small grant budget because the the take up has been lower than the allocated budget. I wondered if, I know budgets are tight, but if you could keep the budget the same for this year, because this is probably the year where the grants may be needed more than ever. And of course, absorb that money to, if it is undersubscribed. But it was just a little plea from me on behalf of those who may so desperately need the grants this year.
We'll certainly look at look at at that process. But but they have been unsubscribed, even though the team have been working very hard to make the grants more accessible over the last couple of years. We are dealing with a huge amount of grant funding that, you know, in scale is hugely different to our small grant scheme with discretionary funding that has come from government. I think that's where we, the focus of getting that out, again, another team that have been working, you know, tremendously hard to get them out. Unfortunately, although councillor Lumby said at the beginning this was tinkling around the edges, it is actually a massive saving we've had to had to make here. And really, every every area has to contribute a little bit. So I'm afraid I'm going to be, you know, stick my neck out and say, much though I'd love to be able to reinstate that fifteen thousand, I think we've got to stick with being firm across the board.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Is there any debate on this paper, please?
Councillor Weir, Chair, could you like to contribute?
Councillor Weir?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just, I'll be with you in a minute. Thank you very much, Chair. I think we should welcome this budget. It's balanced and reassuringly competent, well directed to the priorities we we really have to address at the moment. I think a number of us have shared concerns about the pressures across the board, but particularly on development management. It's good to hear that officers are are working hard to shift that balance into the pre application process. And I I hope that we can see more action there in the future. But overall, I think they get the the right focus on protecting services and service quality. After all, what we want to do is to do what we can to support the wellbeing of our communities, protect our environmental services and and our housing service. I think we have to recognise that the council has been through a very radical transformational period over the past year. And the council's operations will never be the same again. We pay tribute, therefore, to the enormous effort of all council staff across the board that they've shown in in keeping the show on the road so effectively in the past year and and give them the support for continuing this as as we move forward on the basis of this budget. Thank you, Mr Botham and and Laura Taylor, for all that your teams have done. Thank you.
Councillor Lumby?
Sorry, Chair, there was councillor Power as well.
I know, I've seen that councillor Lumby.
Next, or I'm happy to go behind councillor Power again.
Councillor Power, councillor Lumby's happy to be behind you.
Thank you, Chair. I think we need to congratulate staff on not only managing an enormous deficit this year, but also producing a budget that allows us to manage next year's deficit and maintain services. We've had the odd hiccup here and there with the phone system and the website. But I think everybody recognises that we have maintained services. And that's because the staff and the cabinet have been working really hard to make it happen. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Lumby, happy to go now?
Oh, yes. Thank you, thank you, Chair. I do have serious reservations on a number of fronts. Let's not go through them all now. But suffice to say, out in the countryside, the two issues where we encounter the council the most are undoubtedly planning stroke enforcement and the collection of our bins, all to be supplemented with large numbers of cringeworthy weak pun literature. I particularly worried about these proposals in relation to the DM team. Yes, pre apps have been around for years. Councillor Todd referred to me as a corporate lawyer. I was in fact a corporate, a commercial property lawyer. We played with this. We set one up at great expense for the for the Olympics in two thousand and twelve, for example. The reality is that our planning service is really, really struggling at the moment. I've spoken to officers who are you know, really struggling. They don't feel they're properly appreciated, which they should, because they do a wonderful, wonderful job. And they are working incredibly, incredibly hard with a large amount of workforce. And as a result, things are undoubtedly slipping time wise. But enforcement is 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 a really massive, massive issue. Across the countryside, I believe the same very much applies in the city as well. People are just going ahead willy nilly and building because they don't really think there's any danger there will be enforcement. They don't really feel any danger at all. They just feel the rules can be be ignored. And you know what? The sort of evidence sometimes suggests they may be right. There was a recent case where enforcement, despite repeated reminders, failed to serve a notice within four years of the action occurring. And of course, it became time barred. We need to be sending a very clear message to people that enforcement is important to this council and that if you go ahead and do things without permission, we will come round and enforce. And we will stop you or make you make you take it down. And we mustn't allow the the reverse to feel. If we show strength, if we feel, show that we can be strong and that we will enforce, actually, people will stop, stop flouting the rules, will stop going ahead without permission and will actually comply. And that actually will be a genuine saving, because at that point, we won't actually need so many enforcement officers. Obviously, I want to add my my thanks along with councillor Power and councillor Weir for all the hard work our officers have done in incredibly difficult times. It has been a very, very tough year. And I'm sure all of us councillors appreciate what they are doing. But I really do feel we should be making a proper investment into them and into growing that team, not reducing it, notwithstanding the pressures we are in, so that we can provide a proper service to the residents of the whole district. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Lumby. Was there any more debate on this, Matthew?
Councillor Horrell, Chair.
Councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Matthew. Just a a a few small points to 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 raise, Chair. Firstly, to reiterate the thanks to the officers who have prepared the papers and clearly been working tirelessly behind the scenes. And we know with all of the changes that they've had to deal with throughout the year, they have stood by us and delivered outstanding services in difficult circumstances. Which is why I suppose I would be remiss not to say how disappointed I am to see how much of the saving is coming from staffing numbers. Departments that already stretch, as has already been said this evening, offering up headcount. I think that is most unfortunate. And I would have hoped that the the administration had taken a different route. In particular, some of those key services like housing and planning, which we have already indicated are stretched. The other issue which we have touched on but not talked about in significant detail is that the residents across the board are being hit with increases for fees, for charges, their council tax. They are being asked to put their hand deeply into their pocket and to put money back into the system at the council. And the reason why that is all rather disappointing, Chair, is that we have a council currently that is delaying decision making, it's dithering over really important projects that could generate income and generate opportunities and growth for this council. And the sadness is at this time, the important elements that could be, decisions that could be taken are being delayed, they're being consulted on endlessly, and no progress is being made. And that, Chair, is a disappointment because our residents and our staff are paying for that in this budget. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Horrell. Were there any further debate, Mr Watson?
Yes, Chair, sorry, councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Hiscock, please.
Thank you, Chair. I really wish that I could live in this wonderful fantasy world that the Conservatives on this group live in. They spend half the time whinging that we're having to cut services and the rest of the time complaining that we're trying to raise funds to pay for services. Which do they want? Which on earth do they want us to do? Do we cut services?
This isn't about the opposition, this is about debate on the paper.
Thank you very much. Well, I would just like to say in that case that it's a very good paper, it's well worked out, it's comprehensive, it's coherent, unlike some of the arguments against it. And I'm very happy that we've got this and we're very happy to take it through. But I just do get bored with the same old stupid, inefficient, inaccurate arguments that we have to put up with day after day from this party before us. So I'll end it there.
Thank you councillor Hiscock. Is there any further, Mr Watson?
I can see no further requests, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So just to say that I am disappointed with the reduction in the staff. I think there would have been other ways to balance the book. Staff who have worked tirelessly and so hard behind the scenes for all of us. And particularly at some certain times, unemployment going up, there must have been other options that we could have considered. So I share councillor Horrell's disappointment on that. With regards to the enforcement piece, councillor Lumby, you and I have always disagreed on this. And I believe it's people's views on enforcement. Primarily, that's our expecting us to come out and beat people with a stick when they've done wrong. And unfortunately, that service is very limited with the actions it can take through the legal process. But I take your point that people aren't happy. And that's been going on for many, many years, regardless of the amount of investment that's gone into the enforcement team. I have no specific actions on this paper that have come out of this. So unless anybody disagrees, we note the comments and we move on to the next item. So item seven, capital investment strategy twenty twenty one to twenty thirty one scrutiny report reference SC zero three seven and cabinet report reference cab three two eight three. Recommendation on page thirty seven is that the committee comment on the proposals within the cabinet report. Councillor Cutler, I understand you're going to introduce. Would you like to introduce the next three papers separately? Or will you be introducing them together so we can just skip forwards onto the next one?
No, I'll just, I think it, I think it do need considering separately. But I'm happy to introduce them both at the same time if you want. You know, you as Chair wish to debate both papers at the same time, that's.
No, I'm happy to take them separately. I just wanted if you want.
I think the capital investments, yeah, the capital investment strategy sets out the council's capital spending programme. And it details the overall programme for ten years as planned at this stage. And will show how it will be financed and and the impact on the medium term financial strategy and therefore on the revenue budget, which is the important aspect here. Council, council will be asked to approve the capital programme. And the financing of the capital programme shown as appendixes A and B. We also have to approve the minimum revenue provision policy statement and also the flexible use of capital receipt reserve. This paper asks cabinet, subject to council approval of the whole paper, to approve the capital budget for IMT equipment and software expenditure, an additional two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to repairs to the weirs. And also delegates to section one five one officer to approve expenditure of up to two hundred and sixty thousand pounds subject to business cases for decarbonisation of the city offices. So it's a comprehensive paper of the capital investment strategy. Happy to take questions. We have the expertise, hopefully, to answer it across the piece.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Before we go into questions and answers, could I remind everybody that we are tight for time this evening. So to keep your comments and your answers brief, and that does not include giving us your CV or outright criticism of the opposition, please focus on the business in hand. Councillor Lumby, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair. Just two breakout questions, pages forty eight and forty nine. I see there we have four million pounds referred to the advantage of the housing company. Mr Botham, can you remind me, because I'm forgetful of these things? Have we not decided on a different way with the housing company? Or is that now still going ahead? And in relation to what? And secondly, I see on page forty nine, and I think I saw councillor Lernie on the list. And secondly, I see on page 49, and I think I saw councillor Lernie on the list, it says that we expect to complete the British, the Bishop's Waltham redevelopment this year. I went past that site today and absolutely nothing at all was going on, site set of anything at all. So does that remain a realistic ambition or does that need to be slightly amended? Thank you.
Chair, just picking up on the question that the proposals for the housing company, that the provision in this report mirrors the agreement in the revised budget in September, where we reduce the capital provision to support the company. We are proposing to bring forward a different model, a leasing model rather than a capital investment model. And so whether or not, you know, the final detail of that is still to be worked out. But we have given an assurance to the Business and Housing Policy Committee that will bring the paper back through that committee before any company is established. Proposal still to establish so to support the development such as the development at Winlow, which is being brought forward currently to planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Botham. Councillor Power, you have a question?
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, can I have my second question answered? Sorry, apologies to jump in in front of.
Oh, councillor Lumby.
I saw councillor Lernie did turn her mic on briefly as well.
We do expect the Bishop's Waltham depot, certainly the last timetable I saw, which was relatively recently, at the end of this year. There is, obviously, there's quite a lot of preparatory work to be done on that. But we are getting there.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, councillor Lumby?
It was an answer. I might have a small bet with councillor Lernie on that one and we'll see where it ends up, but a very small one.
Okay. Councillor Power?
Thank you, Chairman. My question relates to page 63. I think it may be a question for Mr Aitken. Would it be possible to show on this table the source of funding? I'm aware that some of those projects are from either external grants or from SIL reserves. And I think it would be easier to explain to the man on the number 64 if we could code these in some way to demonstrate that we're levering external funding as well as IR reserves. Thank you.
Mr Botham, is that a thought for you?
I'm happy to, you know, we have debated this with the finance team about whether that's possible. The split is actually shown in the funding part of the paper but not allocated to specific schemes. Our concern was that it would be very, very complex, particularly for projects that are subject to appraisal but based on the possibility of getting grants that haven't even been applied for. But it is possible and we are looking at the possibilities of how we could show it on the approved list where we're sure. For example, Voltex, we know that, you know, that figure does include the LET grant. So there are several examples of that, but it is quite complex. And we've got to be very careful that we don't set hairs running in terms of grants that haven't even been applied for, let's put it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions on this, please? Councillor Horle, I see you've raised your hand. Were there any others, Mr Watson?
No, that's it, Chair. Oh, councillor Lumby's just raised his hand.
Hiscock again. Councillor Horle first and then councillor Lumby, if that was an intentional hand up.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions as they relate firstly to page 63, that we have money in for the forecast for 2122 of River Park of £400,000. However, we all know and understand that River Park needs to move forward. But it would indicate here that there is no forward plan for that property post next year. Could perhaps councillor Cutler elaborate on that, please, or Mr Botham? And my second question relates to the list of activities under subject to appraisal on page 64, and that there are a number of opportunities that we have within the council for development on other sites that we have. And yet there is limited spend here for those others. So we have elements like Barfield Close for 2122 and 2223. But we have nothing here for station approach or other projects, excepting that they are subject to further discussion. Again, perhaps someone could elaborate, please, on the forward thinking. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Cutler?
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the Riverside, River Park, sorry, £400,000, that is for the soft strip of the centre when it closed, that is an approved budget and is in the approved budget list. We have an approach that is slightly different than the previous administrations. We don't put a huge wish list in here and guess some figures. We're looking at the areas that we know will be subject to appraisal and that we know we have some detail on, rather than a broader wish list. I think that would be my simple answer to this.
Would anybody else like to address any of the other parts of councillor Horle's question? Or councillor Horle, do you feel it's been addressed?
Chair, I'm happy to move forward.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Horle. I was going to come to you councillor Lumby, but then I spotted the councillor Crask had a question, so you can come behind him this time. Councillor Crask?
Very good. Thanks, Chair. Just I think staying with appendix A, if I may, just on the detail of numbers. Can we talk a bit about the West Wing refurbishment at 385 and what's occurring there, given plans for the West Wing as a whole?
Mr Botham, are you able to elaborate on the plans for the West Wing?
Yeah, that's in relation to refurbishment works. There are some essential maintenance work that is needed to make sure the West Wing is fit for purpose. So that's what that investment relates to. It's effectively maintaining existing use, but it needs redecorating and some additional works to just ensure it fits the purpose for teams to operate it.
Councillor Lumby?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm looking at page 52 and 53, although I thought it's really the wrong place to be looking. We are proposing to spend over the next few years, an awful lot of money, clearly, on our housing investment, our thousand homes. And we're talking here, I mean, financing, it refers to 48% financing. Could we understand just very quickly, I'm sure Mr Botham will know off the top of his head, the total amount we are going to be proposing to be spending? The amount of that we propose as borrowing? And the extent to which that is to be financed? Do we meet it from rent or sales? Hopefully not. And as a follow-up question, in assessing that, and I'd asked about this in the Business and Housing Committee, do we have yet in shareable form a sort of demand matrix that shows the sort of housing that we will need to be building? And the sort of 10 years that we're looking for? Because surely that will be important to actually work out what those figures are for the amount that it's going to cost and the amount we're going to have to borrow and the income that we'll generate. Sorry, that was quite complicated, but hopefully it can be simply answered. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lumby. Mr Botham?
Yeah, I think I must have failed the test, councillor Lumby, in that I can't, I can't recollect exactly the top figure that we're spending on.
Sure, sure.
I will find out and let you know. It's in the paper. I was just trying to track it down.
Very, very, it's fine. We can do it separately, yes.
But it is proposed for the housing, but we'll come on to that in the HRO paper later on. But it is proposed to fund that through borrowing. And it is, it is, it is, there has been an assessment around how that generates rent and continues to, the proposal to fund through borrowing is because the rent and income generated from that housing will sustain it and make it viable over the life of the properties that we build. As far as the properties that we propose to build, we're bringing forward a development strategy which will highlight that. But we do have, we have significant demand for all types, from one bed to four bed properties across the district. We do have the main demand being for rented, but obviously some demand for other seniors as well. Hence why we're including some shared ownership within that building programme.
Chairman, I meant to raise, I mean, the figures around that councillor Lumby was looking for are probably those in appendix A under the housing revenue account. I did mean, and I'm not sure if the committee were informed, but we did spot yesterday that there was a mistake in those columns in terms of the housing revenue account on page 64, in that the 2021 figures have been transposed from the 2031 figures. And so, and I'm surprised, I'm surprised no one's picked it up, the major repairs figure looks like it says £10 million this year, dropping to six this year, when in fact it should say four. And I've got the other figures somewhere, but I'm not sure if they were sent through to the committee earlier, the revised page. We will make sure that that revision gets on the paper before it goes to Cabinet.
Yeah, Chair, just to explain, the figures in the grey column are figures for information, they don't form part of the strategy. So they're not, they're not, although as councillor Cutler says, they are, they have been transposed in error. That did highlight then for councillor Lumby that the investment in new buildings, £238.5 million within that paper. So I have now found the figures.
Fabulous.
Thank you, Mr Botham. I haven't seen any other questions. Is that it? Matthew, you haven't seen anything else?
Councillor, no, I think that's it, Chair, sorry.
We shall move on to debate then. Does anybody else have debate on this paper?
Yeah, nothing, it's okay, Chair. Oh, councillor Horle.
Councillor Horle, please.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very quiet, councillor Horle.
Sorry, Chair, is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Thank you. Apologies. Chair, I think it's most interesting for those of us who look at the long-term delivery of the services for the council, that despite conversations with many of the cabinet members over the recent weeks about their desire to drive growth and have a recovery plan for the council post-COVID, that this capital strategy really lacks any great vision beyond the immediate budget. And that I think should be concerning for all of us. Where is that vision? Where is that creativity? Where is that economic strategy? Where is that development strategy that we all need to understand to bring back growth in this changing environment? I don't see it in this capital strategy, Chair. And that leads me to think that the comments we've heard are words, but they're not going to be actions that we see anything delivered against. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horle. Any further debate from anybody? No?
No.
In that case, in that case, we shall just.
Councillor Becker.
Okay, councillor Becker.
Sorry, my fingers aren't fast enough. I just wanted to applaud officers for this, for this report. I think it's ambitious, it's positive, it's also responsible. And in these uncertain and unprecedented times, that's such an important aspect. So I'd like to congratulate the team on these reports. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Becker. So now we will, we've commented on this paper, we've debated this paper, we've asked questions this paper, and I have no actions to take forwards on this paper. So we have commented and noted and we will now move on to Treasury Management Strategy 202122, scrutiny report reference SC038, cabinet report CAB3282, and Neil, 22, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief on the Treasury Management Strategy and I'm sure it's not particularly contentious. The Treasury Management Strategy includes updated information provided by, economic information provided by our advisers, Arling Close, following the climate emergency declaration. It does include a commitment not to invest in the fossil fuel industry. But it also includes, and I think this is the crucial part, details of the changes to the public works loan board lending criteria, which now precludes borrowing from PWLB for any purposes if the council plans to buy assets primarily through yield. I think it's really important that members understand that there's been a fundamental change in government policy to make it far more difficult for councils to buy assets for yield entirely. And it will preclude some of the things that we were thinking of and have been thinking of in the past. Because unless there is really good evidence that assets are being bought for other reasons within the council where there are full plans, it will be far too risky for the council to borrow from any source to buy that sort of asset. And that really fundamentally changes the game. It's clear that governments are very concerned that councils may go out and buy apparently cheap assets, particularly after the crisis, and be landed in some very difficult positions. Recommendations for the paper is to approve the statement and therefore the strategy, and also to approve the government's arrangements. And I'm happy to take any other questions. I'm sure officers will be able to respond better than me on some aspects of it.
So unlike councillor Cutler just said, our scrutiny recommendation is to comment on the request and not to approve that recommendation at all. So please strike that from what you're thinking and comment on the cabinet report before us.
Sorry, my apologies, Chair.
That's all right, councillor Cutler.
It's been a long evening.
You had the first question.
Is it me? My own. Thank you. Thank you for the report. Last year, I asked the question, and it's a bit scary when you start any question with the words 'last year', I'd asked how this policy had changed from the previous one and that the changes of these things be highlighted in the report. Actually, I also recall last year when the particular policy that the councillor cut amendment mentioned about not being involved in the fuel industry, or the fossil industry, rather. I think that actually came in last year from memory and I asked the question, how many shares will we actually be sold as a result? And the answer was none, because actually we didn't have any in there in the first place. Can I ask again? Can I ask again, um, specifically, and I thought it was very helpful and interesting to, you talked about the PWLB. Other than that, is this exactly the same policy as last year or has it changed? And if so, in what way? Thank you very much.
Councillor Cutler?
It brought along Mr Botham.
I, I think possibly Mr Botham would, would, would know more of the detail. As I said, as I said, um, you know, PWLB is one of the key parts of it. Um, a lot of the economic information has obviously been updated in there. Uh, I'm not sure if there are any specific change, policy changes, but, uh, Richard, I'm sure could answer.
Yeah, well, uh, with, with, yeah, it's, it's not significantly different than, than the previous paper. It is obviously. Updated to take account of our capital strategy that you've just considered and, and the impact that will have on our investment requirements. Uh, we do have Rob Saffas from Hampshire County Council on the call with us today. So if I could just ask Rob if, if, if you could clarify any, any, any sort of policy detail changes that are included in the paper, that'd be helpful.
Of course, and thank you, very happy to, to help answer that question. So there are just, um. A couple of relatively minor things to, to bring to your attention. So Arling Close, our treasury advisers have changed their recommendations. In terms of, um, capping how much of the council's investment balance can be invested in money market funds. Uh, there used to be a fifty percent cap on that and they're now, uh, suggesting that we remove that cap. So the treasury, uh, treasury strategy reflects that change. Um, there is also a recommendation that, uh, at least. For counterparties should be used at all times for any investment balance, overnight investment balances. Um, so that's now built into the strategy as well. And the other change as well, as well as obviously the PWLB point that has been mentioned, uh, to, to highlight is. That the, uh, investment counterparty limits have been reduced slightly to reflect. The fact that, um, the council expects to hold lower balances, um, than last year due, due to the capital programme plans. I hope that's helpful in answering your question.
Thank you. Now, that, 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 that is helpful. None of those things are concerning. Um. I just asked really for, um, for the officers for when we, uh, return next year to do this again. Um, a great long report where everything is basically the same. Um, or not, i- is potentially a way that things can get hidden away. It will be wonderful if the changes that were made and Miss Saffas has, uh, uh, extremely well, um. Ablely described them, they be highlighted so that we can focus on those changes, understand what those changes are. Rather than necessarily having to get out last year's and compare and understand what's going on. I think that would be, um, a, a lot more efficient and. Um, in, uh, if one wanted to hide things, and I make absolutely no suggestion, in fact, quite the reverse. I'm sure that no one is trying to hide anything, but if one wanted to hide it, that's the sort of approach that, uh, will, will be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lumby. Um, councillor Weir, you had a question?
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, I wanted to, to go back to this, this question, um, around the PWLB and the, the implications of these changes. Obviously, we have a strategic asset purchase programme that we've inherited. And I think we've got, uh, an amount that's still, uh, there, that in principle we could be spending. How will these changes to the PWLB impact on that? And any other investments for, uh, income generation that the council might be looking at? Thank you.
Mr Botham?
Chair, yeah, the, the, the governance arrangements around our strategic asset, asset purchase, um, programme. Have always sought to achieve, um, uh, what we, what we termed a, a double win. So with, whilst it may be income generating, they had to have a. A benefit to the district at the same time. Um, my, my, my current understanding is that that, that sort of investment would still. Apply under the rules, under, under the change, the, the change, the change rules. What we do need to be really careful of is, is effectively with any, every year I need to make a declaration. That we haven't invested in, in something purely for yield as, as councillor Cutler said. Um, and the, um. And, and there are some fine margins with, with some things around there. So we've looked at some properties in, in central Winchester and we need to just consider each time. What is, what is the, the regeneration benefits of that? What is the, what, what are the wider investment benefits of that, of that? Or is it just yields? And so that, that's really, that's the key to it. It's, it's, um. As, as we know, a number of authorities have invested very heavily in, in, in yield and they've used that to sustain their accounts. And so it's a perfectly reasonable strategy to adopt. Um, the changes in these rules just make that, make, make, um, that, uh, um. Very challenging if you want to maintain public works loan board access.
Thank you, Mr Botham. Councillor Horle, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. And, um. One is just a comment to say that the Arling Close briefing that we were invited to. Is a really helpful step to get that broader financial picture, um, uh, that we, that we were included in with the county. So thank you, um, for allowing us to have that level of knowledge, which helps us to look at some of these papers with a better understanding. Um, I just wanted to make the point, and I know councillor Cutler is making the point about the PLB changes. Which we all obviously have to adhere to, but in fact at Winchester, we were always complimented on our double win strategy. Uh, we were never assessing, um, opportunities for purchase simply on the revenue that they would generate. They were always, um, having to deliver other elements of the council's plan. And I think that strategy is a really important one and one that I'm sure you would, uh, want to, uh, uh, reinforce. And I just wanted to clarify that that was, uh, the, the, the current plan and that we would be taking that view on any future discussions. Thank you.
Councillor Horle, yes, I, I, I mean, that, that would continue to be our strategy, of course, but I, I suppose I was highlighting it because the risks. And, and the definitions aren't entirely clear. How, how government will work. So therefore assembling land for a project that you don't. You haven't really got, you know, I mean, at times we've looked at things through SAPs and, and whatever, where it's been. It's got a good yield and in the long term it would be useful for gen- regeneration. Um. And I, I suppose I question as to whether, you know, we have to be a little bit more cautious, let's put it that way, and be able to. Um. Clearly articulate the, the, the other value of the land other than asset management, which, which should go from section one five one, officer's point of view. He, he has to be convinced of it. And I suppose the risks are around. The absolute sanction, and I'm not suggesting we'd get to an absolute sanction, but the absolute sanction is, is that the PWLB can, um. Actually require councils to pay back all the borrowing from PWLB and, um. Uh, one wouldn't want to get anywhere near that position. I'm just, I'm just urging caution and that we should be aware of it, that, 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 though. There is no point in espousing the, the policy that we could, but go out and buy purely, you know, sort of developing come purely from asset purchase. That was all, I was just, um, uh, making the committee aware of that aspect of it.
Thank you. If that's it for questions, I'm not seeing any more.
Chair, um, sorry, we've got councillor Bronk and councillor Crass.
Oh, councillor Bronk, then councillor Crass then, please.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Chair. Um, my question is on page, about page ninety-nine. It refers to the chair of the Audit Committee, uh, being a member of the Treasury Investment Group. Um, I'd just like to clarify our question, is that the chair of the Audit and Governance, uh, Committee that's been, um. In place for the last couple of years. Uh, the other, um, comment that I just wanted to add, if I can. I've, we're thinking about reports for next year in the text, is paragraph sixteen twenty-six and sixteen twenty-seven. Refer to enhanced returns over the longer term. Um, my investment management, um, experience suggests. That we should always refer to the potential going forward for enhanced returns. If those, um, past performance isn't, uh, necessarily a guide to future performance. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bronk. Who'd like to respond to that one? Councillor Cutler?
Yeah, I think. Sorry, my response would be point taken. Um, we will, uh. Check, well, obviously the audit and governance point is, 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 is terminology and, uh, I know councillor Bronk is very keen. That we get things right and we will, uh, take note of that.
Thank you. Was it councillor Crass next, Matthew?
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Crass.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I think it's a, a question probably for Rob, if I may. Um, I wonder if he's got any thoughts on. Why there's the lifting of the cap, um, on the level of investment in money markets. Um, and I might be putting two and two together and making five, but is that related to? Um, expectation that there will be less borrowing for acquisitions? Um, is that? What it means?
Um, so this is a, this is a, it's a very good question. This is, this is more of a general strategy point. So it's to do with Arling Close's assessment of. The relative risks associated with different types of investments that the council can make. Um, and whereas in the past there's been a lot of alternatives to money market funds and, and those alternatives with, you know. For example, if you're placing money out, uh, as, as, as overnight money that could be available for you to use again the next day. An alternative to a money market fund would be putting the money into, into a bank account. Um, Arling Close have reassessed the, um, the banks and they're taking a more cautious view on the banks. Um, and so they are suggesting that because money market funds offer you, um, a very diversified way of. Um, gaining access to a lot of underlying investments with different account parties. That's a, um, from a risk perspective, one of the, um, the, the best ways that they think that, um, the council can invest that, um, liquid. Cash at the moment. So I don't know if that answers your, your question.
Um, I think there's a very good answer and I think it does. So thank you, real appreciate it. Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm now going to move on to debate. Does anybody have any debates on this paper, please? Matthew, is there anything in chat come up?
Nothing that I can, um, see, Chair, no.
Okey dokey. In that case, we have commented, um, and made our points again. Um, I, I only have one action on this one and that is, um, for consideration be given to. Um, highlighting the changes here on the air of the Treasury Management Paper as a whole. Um, so unless anybody thinks I've missed anything, we shall note that paper and move on to the next one. So the Housing Revenue Account Budget Paper twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Procurement of, um, term maintenance contracts. Scrutiny Report Reference SC zero three nine, Cabinet Report Reference Cav three two nine zero. We also have, um, Monica Gillan and David Light. Did Monica manage to get in, Matthew?
She hasn't made it in, Chair, no, unfortunately.
Okay, but David Light's here, is he?
Uh, no, I don't believe he is, Chair, no.
Okay, I was going to come to them after the intro, but councillor, uh, councillor Narnie, if you'd like to introduce the paper for us, please.
Uh, thank you councillor Brooke. Um, I'm really pleased to be able to bring forward, um, a housing revenue account budget and ten-year plan. Which puts the needs of tenants both current and future at its heart. While at the same time aligning with the council's carbon reduction priority. It is ambitious, but importantly, it's sustainable and prudent. Um, the budget is based on a rent increase in line with the government's national rent standard. Of one point five percent that will increase average council rents for our five thousand current council tenants. By one pounds fifty-six per week, um, from a hundred and three pounds sixty-seven to a hundred and five pounds twenty-three. For our current tenants, we plan future investment in major repairs of seventy million pounds. Estate improvements and sheltered housing upgrades of four point three million. Disabled adaptations of nine million, fire safety work of one point six million. And much needed investment in the sewage treatment infrastructure of one point four million pounds. Um, we've responded to tenant feedback on services provided by our contractors. And are proposing that we extend the maintenance contract with Osborn for a further five years. But re-tender the heating appliance servicing and repair contract. Looking to meeting our future needs, we plan to take full advantage of the new freedoms and flexibilities. Offered through prudential borrowing and very low rates of interest to fund the delivery of an additional, uh. One thousand, uh, well-designed, energy-efficient, affordable homes in the district over the next ten-year period. We've proposed to increase the funding for climate change initiatives over the next ten years to fifteen point seven million pounds. With an additional half a million pounds set aside for nitrate mitigation. We'll also be creating a new energy officer post to support this area of work. Um, I'd like to finish by thanking officers for their hard work in putting this budget and the business plan that underpins it together. Um, Dick Johnson's work in particular has been invaluable in giving us the assurance that our plans are achievable and affordable. Um, and I'd also like to thank the members of TACT for their continued work in what's been a very difficult year, um, for all of us. So I'm happy to take questions, um, and I believe we have Dick Johnson here as well to help with the detail.
Thank you. Um, councillor Horle, I believe you had a question?
Not at this point, thank you, Chair.
Uh, councillor Lumby's indicated.
Councillor Lumby, let's come to you then.
Thank you, Chair. It's exciting to be back. Um, thank you, um, to councillor Early for her, her presentation. And thank you to the officers for, um, this, this very, very interesting report. Can I ask a, a few questions? Um, first of all, on the nitrate offset, um. Is there anything specific, uh, in mind or is that money just being put aside? Um, the reason I ask, um, was we had a, and I, I apologize, I'm not sure whether she was on the. Uh, briefing with the South Downs National Park, um, last week or not. Um, but there was a, um, discussion then about the fact that some of these nitrate schemes are not necessarily, um, potentially, as they seem indeed. They may actually, um, encourage, um, poor behaviour, um, rather than necessarily mitigating it. So, um, do we have any specific schemes or in mind or is this just money to one side? And if so, are we going to create some guidelines around how that's, that's spent and ensure that, um. Uh, we don't end up encouraging poor behaviour rather than, um, uh, solving it. Um, secondly, question, um, uh, TACT had made some comments, um, previously, um. In relation to they, they, they weren't feeling they will be properly consulted. Um. Has that now been addressed and are, are their concerns, um, laid to rest? Um, and finally, um, given the, the strength of our HRA budget, um. And given the difficulties which so many people, um, are, are facing at the moment. Um, do we really need to, um, put up the rents, um, above inflation? I appreciate that's the, uh, the government guidance, but given how hard it is for so many people. And I know she's acutely aware of many of examples of this. Um, do we really need to go down this route this year? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lumby. Councillor Narnie, would you like to respond?
Uh, with nitrates, uh, there are some schemes in mind at the moment. Um, this is an area of difficulty though for both the council in its own development role and also in its development management role. And, um, I agree it is important that we, if we're going to do it, that we do it right. Um, and we're certainly, um, looking hard at this and councillor Porter in particular is spending, you know, quite a lot of her time. Thinking about how we go about this. Um, in relation to the, the TACT comment. Um, they, um, have been given the opportunity to go over this paper, uh, with officers. Um, both councillor Horle and I attended the last TACT meeting. Um, so there was an opportunity for TACT members to. So there was an opportunity for TACT members to question us, clearly me rather more than councillor Horrell, about these issues and indeed previous papers. They had the opportunity to to go over them in advance of decisions being taken. I think some of this is around the difficulty around virtual meetings, which, you know, as we've experienced this evening, is something that does cause a lot of difficulties with people who aren't used to using the technology all the time. And that's something that we'll need to address going forwards. But clearly with the current health situation, it's not possible for us to get back into rooms together just yet. In relation to the strength of the budget and do we need to raise rents at this time, I would point out that it's a relatively modest rent increase, but also that when you look at our business plans, these feed in over 30 years. And actually, they can, over time, very small increases can have a dramatic impact on what we can do in the long run. I'd actually like to, Dick, would you like to come in and talk about how the rents affect the long-term planning?
Thank you, councillor. I've got a slight delay on my on my meeting, so there might be a little bit of an issue about when I'm responding. But essentially, you're right. When we had the 1% reduction for four years, it sucked a huge amount of resources out of the the HRA nationally and at Winchester. And essentially, it is a very modest increase. Whereas perhaps we could have a rent week, free week perhaps, to offer tenants, we wouldn't want to actually affect the base rent calculation going forward because, as you say, it does underpin the strength of the finance of the HRA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Johnson. I appreciate your input. Matthew, do we have any other questions on this?
Sorry, Chair, is it possible just to hear a little more about Mr Johnson's comment there? It was interesting and councillor Larny's response in terms of that idea for a a rent-free week for tenants. Can we just hear a little more about that? Apologies.
It's not something that's, it's not something that's ever been brought up and I don't think we've actually looked at the occasions of that, but Dick might want to expand.
Yeah, I was just trying to explain that actually you wouldn't want to have something that impacts on the base rent going forward, but you could have something which recognises a one-off instance. So you could essentially offer a rent-free week in one year and some authorities do have them. Yeah, so that was just an idea that I've just suggested. It wasn't anything that is.
Thank you. Sorry, I know this is catching everyone's side and I'm prepared, but it does sound like something that we might like to talk about further. I think we've got Housing and Business next week. Is it possible to find a slot in that to talk about that? Councillor Weir, I don't know where you're here. Sorry, I pushed my luck too far, but I would really like to explore that idea. But appreciate that's something that we should do when people are prepared rather than sort of more out of the blue. Thank you.
Chair, thank you. Chair, I have noted that and I will pick it up. I was going to note it in debate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scott, you had a question.
Before my question, Chair, I do think as a tenant, we're used to having over a time period rent-free weeks. So this is not a new idea for city council tenants and it'd be good to actually pick it up in the housing and business. That's not my question, by the way. It's just a comment because of councillor Lumby. Councillor Larny, thank you.
Worth while, sorry.
That's okay, no worries. Councillor Larny, thank you for your introduction. As we know, that the housing team covers some brilliant aspects and brilliant work for the council. And you listed some fantastic things and we obviously note Osborne's recommendation to renew their contract, which is, I think, good news as well. Moving forward, councillor Larny, what would be our state of affairs coming through this really horrendous pandemic with our residents? What's the work moving forward with the housing team, stroke tenants, in trying to address some of the tenants' wellbeing? A lot of the elderly members, tenants, have not had access to their coffee mornings for best part of one year now. And they're literally stuck indoors for best part of last year. And so moving forward, what would be your ideas? Does it need to be addressed in this budget to put some money aside to address, you know, our wellbeing for our residents? And maybe also some good old fashioned ways that we used to do things in housing estates where we could do, if a pandemic allows us to do, is maybe open their street meets again with officers to engage with tenants at certain points around the communities and maybe do some reference to some good old fashioned outside action days in places in our community that sometimes needs a sweep and whatever and actually brings the students in to engage as well with our officers and some members also join in. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Larny, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I think it's a really important issue that you're bringing out there, councillor Scott. We are continuing to make care calls to vulnerable residents, but clearly that's only a very tiny part of what they need. I am conscious also of the issue around coffee mornings and those kind of issues. Monica Gill, who I talk to regularly, certainly doesn't let me forget about those kind of issues. And the closing of common rooms is a problem, you know. However, recent events have shown that we do need to be very careful about the spread of COVID in older people's accommodation, so that is important. But I certainly think that when the weather improves and as and when we're able to get together, that we should be looking, as you say, around these issues about outdoor coffee, potentially outdoor coffee mornings and so on. So certainly we'll talk about with the tenant engagement team around that. And certainly appreciate your input to that as well.
Absolutely. Thanks, councillor Larny.
Thank you. Councillor Horrell, you had a question next.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have three questions. There's reference in the paper to the PH Jones contract and we're here in February. That contract is sort of terminating if it's not extended in September. And our desire, based on obviously tenant and I think officer feedback, that it should be re-tended. Are we giving ourselves sufficient time to do that effectively within the rules that we should be adhering to? Because obviously this is a significant contract and one that has a knock-on effect to other contracts in due course. Question. We're investing this huge amount in the sewage works under the HRA budget. I think it said 3.1 million over the 30-year period. I don't see us as sewage experts despite some excellent officers in the team. Why are we continuing to put very significant monies into this area and not talking to the utility company about actually supporting some of this further? And thirdly, the housing company has been very much in our focus. We've spent significant time and money on that, but I'm still not clear when and how that is going to emerge and whether we'll be able to wrap in any of the new developments to the housing company if we're taking the leasehold approach. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll respond briefly to all those points and then invite officers to elaborate further, if that's all right. With regard to the contract, we have been looking at this for some time and certainly I believe that we are well on track to be able to do that within the timescale we're talking about. The sewage works, as you say, it would be fantastic if we could simply hand these over to Southern Water Lock, Stock and Barrel, but we've been trying to do that for the last 20 years and it gets increasingly more difficult to get them to take anything at all on, certainly nothing of the scale of many of our sewage works. So I think it's better for us to get on and do this work, partly because if we've any hope of getting them to take these things on, they need to be in tip-top condition. Finally, the housing company. Certainly our intention with Winall is to use the housing company for that development because it will certainly, it will assist us in getting the right kind of tenure for those properties and appropriate tenants in them. And I think we'll want to take the approach with various other developments. I think Richard Botham can probably explain further about some of the thinking around that. So if I could ask, I think if, Dick, do you want to take the first couple of issues?
Yes, sorry, I'm not an expert in the procurement process and obviously it may be changing as well with us exiting Brexit. So I think I'd have to take that one and come back unless Richard has an answer on that one. With the sewage works, I think we have a problem in so much as that there is a backlog of works that's required on maintaining the sewage network system. And we are looking at the moment at trying to pull together an asset management plan to determine what the investment needs around this are. So at the moment, what we're proposing is that we invest in the procurement of a sewage vehicle and some reactive work around a collapsed sewer for next year. So it's not wholesale significant investment at the moment, but there may well be a time in the future when we need to invest more, but at the moment, we're not quite certain what that investment need is. Thank you.
Chair, if I could just come in on those points, I know in discussions with Mr Kingston and property services team that they are reviewing some well-established frameworks for gas safety contracts and we are confident that they will be fully, that they will be EU compliant anyway, whether that remains a requirement or not. They still will do, I think, in the timescale we're talking about. But it will be a robust process that's been well developed with other social landlords as well. So we're confident we can do it in the timescales. It is going to be tight, obviously, but I know the team are working on it today, actually. They spent a lot of time on it today. So we're confident we can do that in time. As far as the sewage works, as councillor Larny highlighted, the previous discussions we've had with Southern Water, we spent a lot of time, effort and money getting them up to what was meant to be the required standard. The rules changed and Southern Water wouldn't take them on at that time. And if there is an opportunity to hand over, I think it would make a lot of sense. So there is merit in those discussions continuing. My fear is that we take a lot more than 3.8 million investment to get them to the standard at which the utility companies would be prepared to take them on. But like I say, that's something where we'll continue that dialogue if we can. With regard to the housing company, the proposal at the moment is based on the fact that if we build in the HRA, we build at a cheaper cost than if we build through the company. So what we're talking about, if a housing company builds, it builds paying VAT, it builds paying a commercial loan and that sort of thing. The HRA can build at very cheap borrowing rates at the moment. And so it makes sense for the HRA to build funded through the HRA and for the HRA then to lease properties if it wants to achieve a different tenure. So that's the proposal on which we're placing our thinking. But it will require a bit more work and as I say, we'll bring that through business and housing so members can be clear how that could work and with a view to Winall being the scheme that we would like to develop it for. But like I say, that comes through business and housing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Botham, and thank you for raising that, councillor Horrell. So we have no indication of any other questions, but we already have three people indicating to debate. So we have councillor Scott, then councillor Weir, then councillor Lumby. Please do add to the list if you wish to debate this. Councillor Scott first. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Ready to take confidence in this paper coming forward and the sheer investment that the council are doing in our housing stock. Over the course of a few years now, we've seen the benefits of renewed kitchen and bathroom programmes and also the roofing replacement as well. So really pleased that councillor Larny is bringing forward this paper with still investment in the city council properties. I know that, talking from a tenant point of view, that it's really well looked after. And the landlord, city council, is a very good landlord and looks after us tenants and our properties very well. Look forward to seeing what the outcome will be moving forward from PH Jones replacement. And I'm sure that will be a little bit of music to tenants here. There's been some issues, missed appointments, not having the right parts on the vans, et cetera. So that would be good. It's good to have continuity with the major maintenance contract. I know that's not the only one, but it's a major one, Osborne's. So that's quite good. And I like the fact with Osborne's that you do get spin-off on the community engagement manager that comes out on definitely things like the action days and stuff like that. So we've really seen the benefit of Osborne's putting some community money into some of our estates, which is really good. I do think there hopefully is light at the end of this dark tunnel with this virus. And I do take assurance from the cabinet member that we will hopefully try to really get some positive engagement with tenants having some good access to good old cups of tea and cakes again and just good old chats and conversations. I just hope that we can just drive that forward and it would be great because not only also it's good for officers as well, sometimes doing gauge with tenants in those sort of positive times as well, really. But in all, again, thanks to the housing team and the property maintenance team who look after our stock. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Weir?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to councillor Larny and the team for bringing this forward. It's really great to see our housing going from strength to strength despite the climate that we're working in. I just wanted to pick up a couple of things. Obviously, yes, keen to respond or to get a response on the proposals around a rent-free week. Clearly, there may be implications from a benefits perspective that may make this more complicated in the days of universal credit. So, but we can ask some questions and explore together what that might imply. The other thing I wanted to welcome was the proposal for the £15 million to improve energy efficiency of our housing stock. And I'd like to suggest that we have an opportunity here to use this as a platform for part of driving green growth in the business in the district to ensure that businesses in our district benefit from this expenditure and get the injection that they need to move into areas of meeting the climate change requirements that our strategy is pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Weir. We've got councillor Lumby next.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you again for the report and for all the answers given so far. Can I first of all say apologies to Mr Johnson if I embarrassed him by pushing him on that idea and that was no way my intention, if he felt that. And thank you to councillor Weir for agreeing that we can have a discussion around that at the Housing and Business Committee. And it'd be great to have some more background and see where that idea or similar ideas might. great to have some more background and see where that idea or similar ideas might lead us. So thank you for all of that. Thank you for councillor Lernie for confirming that councillor Porter was looking at the whole night trade issue. I hope she's not losing two in that sleep. It sounded like she was devoting a lot of time to it. But I do think it's a very, very important issue because the experience we had up in the Meereen Valley was the potentially, actually, what we were seeing was a system that actually didn't do what it was, I believe, we do on the tin and actually possibly even encouraged the putting extra nitrates into the ground rather than discouraging that. And I thought it was interesting that the suggestion from the South Downs National Park that possibly, you know, they weren't yet there yet on how to deal with that. So it would be great to hear where that one leads us, but also to step with caution and not jump at what may appear to be initially attractive, but possibly is too good to be true, as we saw on that other case. And finally, and returning to an earlier theme, very much supportive of the paper and the ambitions and what we're looking to do. And I think we rightly have a programme, the housing programme and policy that we should all as a council be very proud of. I've raised before and I am concerned that we make sure that properties owned by RSLs, housing associations, are kept up to the same standards or are maintained in how we encourage that behaviour. And secondly, I really would like to see, and I note this, this is something that I think councillor Lernie is going to bring forward, that we do understand the analysis of what tenures we are needing, what sort of housing we need, so we can understand and analyse that a little bit, and also see how that actually then translates and backs into the figures and the very large borrowing requirement that's necessary for this. Because ultimately, we are talking about a huge sum of money and we're talking about building an awful lot of houses. And we need to be sure that our figures are right and that we're building the right ones and providing the needs that are there. So we need to step down from the excellent ambition and just look at the implementation of that and understand that a little better. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Lumby. Councillor Horrall, you wanted to debate?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I wanted to say, councillor Lernie knows this, that we're very keen to work in collaboration with councillor Lernie on this portfolio. It is absolutely essential that we continue to maintain our housing stock. Important that we still deliver new homes because we know there is a need there and that we should all work collectively to deliver that. I do think it's important, we've noted this evening, that we need to ensure that our relationship with TACT is as positive and as robust as it has been historically. They have supported us in our efforts to develop new homes and to move forward with our housing portfolio. And it would be a sadness if somehow we diminish that relationship. So I know that councillor Lernie is keen to ensure that we get back on the correct footing there. Important in this budget is the works put aside for fire, safety essential in all of this, the ongoing repairs and upkeep of our properties. And we just want to ensure that due to some of the inevitable delays that we've had on some elements through COVID this year, that we're able to do some catching up in the coming months. So Chair, overall, I think there is much to commend of this report. And I hope that we will be continuing to nurture relationships. I see, for example, in the capital programme, we don't have monies beyond 23 from Homes England, but I hope that we're still maintaining those very positive discussions with partners and others to ensure that we have additional investment into the new homes programme in the Winchester district. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrall. Any more debate that you've seen, Matthew?
Nothing that I can see, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So I think that's been a really informative and interesting discussion that we've just had. So thank you all for your input. I also have no particular points noted down for us to pick up going forward. So with that, I think we've given that paper a good airing. And thank you. I'd like to reiterate to all the officers for their hard work on bringing that forward today. So we move on to item number 10, the annual council plan refresh 2021-22, scrutiny report reference SC042, council cabinet report reference CAAB3186. I'm guessing, sorry, 3286. So I'm guessing as councillor Thompson has come onto our screens that you will be introducing the paper.
Yes, I will, Chair. Thank you very much. I suppose firstly, can I just say, I can't believe that it is just one year ago when we presented our first council plan to you. It just feels so much longer and so much has happened in the intervening time. But this, having said that, this refresh is very timely. The world in which we drew up our original plan has completely changed. And as we work our way through the effects of the pandemic throughout our organisation, it has understandably had an impact on how we can move forward and deliver the changes that we want to see. This is a refresh. It's certainly not a rewrite. And our priorities are still the same: tackling the climate emergency, ensuring we have the right homes in the right places, creating a vibrant local economy across our district, reducing health inequalities and delivering good value, high quality services. And although many things have changed, the climate emergency has not gone away. And this continues to be our overarching theme. Our challenging aims to make the council carbon neutral by 2024 and the district by 2030 remain. So what's new in this plan? Well, in this refresh, you will see that in each of the sections we set out, we set out what we have achieved so far. So using the section tackling the climate emergency as an example, you will see that amongst other things, we have successfully cut the council's carbon footprint by 468 tonnes, introduced a green electricity tariff for all our operational buildings, installed PV panels on the leisure centre, and also secured over £5 million for a decked car park at the Voltec site, complete with solar PV panels and EV charging units there too. And if you look through the document, you will see a list of achievements to date in all the sections. Of course, one area that has been pushed up the priority list as a result of the pandemic has been the need to roll out the digital delivery of services at speed. And this has ensured that residents and businesses could access information, take part in new virtual consultation and engagement, as well as learning how to take part in online council meetings. And as a result of this, we have seen more people than ever taking the time to engage with us and tell us what they think. In the year ahead, we will be building on this to make sure that we hear from as wide range of our residents as we possibly can across our different communities so that we can ensure that we have better decision-making. I will finish there. There are, there's of course lots more to say, but I know that I'm conscious of the time and I know that, you know, we spent a lot of time on other papers too. But I know that cabinet are keen to hear the views of scrutiny before this paper makes its journey onwards to cabinet and then council in due course. But before I close, I'd just like to thank officers and staff and cabinet colleagues for their help in producing this refresh. I know it hasn't been an easy process with meetings being online. And I and cabinet are very, very appreciative of the help and support that officers and staff have given under very difficult circumstances. I'm very happy to take questions. And I know that a number of my cabinet colleagues are on the call too. And I know that they would be happy to take any questions that are put to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Do we have any questions on this, please?
Scott, Chair.
Councillor Scott, please.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Thompson, for your introduction there. I'm looking at your appendix one on page 154. And as no surprise, my question to you coming up any second now is about your third bullet point under Homes For All, when you mention the bullet point diverse, healthy, cohesive communities, not just homes. My background is community development and it's something I've been asking at different committees for some time. And when I had a meeting with two cabinet members last summer with my fellow ward councillor, can you just explain what you mean by that so that I can take reassurance that you're on track as a cabinet administration and we are on track as a council to do what you've just stated there in your third bullet point there? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott.
Yes.
Go ahead, councillor Thompson.
I mean, obviously, when we're building new homes, we want to build communities that those homes will be in. And that means getting a good mix of people in those homes, a good mix of different types of, you know, not just, you have families, you have older people, you know, you have, you have single people, you have across the range. And also, we'd like the, those, those communities to be able to lead active and healthy lifestyles too. So it's all about designing a community where someone, anybody is, can enjoy living there and can live life to the full, I suppose. I don't know whether councillor Porter might like to say something because obviously, healthy living comes very much under her portfolio. And obviously, we're looking at ways where we can build into the new local plan, the ability to build communities in this way and not just think that, you know, we're sticking up homes anywhere without being those homes fitting into a community.
May I, Chair, do a supplementary on that whilst councillor Thompson's still on screen? Maybe it's my perception, maybe I've got it wrong before councillor Porter comes on. I was hopefully under the understanding that existing communities will be looked at as well. Am I at fault by coming to that conclusion? Or are you just, because obviously what you just said is, when we're moving forward building homes. I was hopefully under some anticipation for your action plan for the council, but you also were mindful of existing communities, which sometimes have had some, no fault of our own, high impact HMOs, just to say that out loud as well. So what's your view, councillor Thompson, about existing communities as well as new build communities?
Well, thank you very much for that question. Yes, absolutely. And I'm extremely mindful of the impact that HMOs, for instance, have on communities. It's happening in my ward right now as we speak. And we, and of course, having been a past representative of, for Stanmore, I know what a huge impact the student population, for instance, has had on that community. But yes, of course, we want to do whatever we can to ensure that our residents are able to have the best quality of life throughout the district. And obviously, our communities that we have now, we want to, we want to improve in whatever way we can.
Councillor Porter, do you want to speak, Chair? Thank you. I'm sure that councillor Scott will understand that I'm not going to speak specifically about Stanmore at this particular time, but an example of where we do focus our effort on the communities. In fact, we said we're focusing our activities on the most disadvantaged areas, communities and groups, supporting a greater diversity of residents. An example of that is the supporting of the opportunity to set up the Community Pantry in Winall, which opened last week. It's an example of being able to offer to that community and to every other community. And I know that people have come from far and wide to visit and use it as well already. Is an example of where we can be really practical in trying to help those communities. And we're also saying very clearly that we want to offer a wide range of physical and cultural activities for all ages and abilities. And that is not just for older people, but for people right across the age groups and from different backgrounds. So I do understand what councillor Scott's saying, but we are definitely supporting the groups that are there already to be stronger. And we will also be working on other initiatives such as the Community Pantry. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. So I shall give it another, oh, councillor Lumby.
You'd be worried if I didn't. Thank you, Chair. And thank you to councillor Thompson for her presentation on the report. Can I ask her a question? In preparing this, did you, did you consider possibly a more of a sort of a thoughtful, I don't know, maybe it's not the wrong word, but you understand what I'm saying, approach in terms of looking at what was achieved, what didn't get achieved, what didn't go so well, a more overall sort of all-sided approach rather than perhaps something which possibly looks a little more sort of propaganda-ish? Is that, is that clear? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lumby. I wouldn't call this propaganda at all. It's, basically, we had to look at it in the light of the pandemic and the impact that that has had on our services, what we want to offer to our residents in the year ahead. We very much had to cut our cloth, as the saying goes. So of course, we looked at all sorts of aspects when we drew up the plan. And I think what you've got before you is a very reasonable, ambitious plan still, frankly, given the circumstances, setting out what we want to achieve in the forthcoming year. And also just letting, letting anyone who reads the document know all the sort of things that we have achieved so far on that journey. The plan, as you know, is for five years. So we still have another four years of it to run. And this is a snapshot, if you like, of what, of where we are right now and what we hope to achieve in the forthcoming year.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Matthew, who's up next for questions?
Chair, councillor Horrall's intended to ask a question. And councillor Scott was for debate.
Councillor Horrall, please.
Thank you, Chair. Could I just ask councillor Thompson whether the climate emergency targets for neutrality by the city council in 24 and the district by 2030? and the district by 2030 are still reasonable objectives, given the limited amount that we've been able to achieve in the last period? That might impact that deliverable. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Horrell. I would take issue with the fact that we don't appear to have achieved very much so far. I think we've actually achieved a huge amount. And what we've got listed here in the document is just a snapshot of all the things that we've been able to achieve so far. We knew when we set those targets that they were going to be extremely challenging. But we were of the view that if we didn't set ourselves challenging targets, there was no way that we would get anywhere near. We wouldn't be pushing ourselves to really achieve anywhere near what we'd like to see. So I really disagree. I think we've done a huge amount in the last year in extremely difficult circumstances. I think.
I'm afraid to keep cutting out councillor Thompson, so we shall move on. Okay, so councillor Thompson, we can't hear you. You keep cutting out. We're going to move on. So if there's no more questions, we're going to move on to debate and start with councillor Scott.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And thank you for coming back on my questions, councillor Porter and councillor Thompson. I didn't mention Stanmore at all. I just mentioned the generic communities per se. Because it's not just Stanmore I've worked in as a community worker. I've even worked in Southampton and places like that. So my thinking generally is that I was hoping for a bright, brilliant, enlightening ideas coming from your bullet point about your diverse, healthy, cohesive communities, not just homes. I wanted some sort of dynamic coming out of the answers there other than unit 12, which is fantastic pantry, but that's just not actually floating everyone's boat at this moment in time, as much as it's getting a crucial need, as much as mutual aid Winchester, as much as food banks and care centre and whatever. But that's not building communities, what you're saying in your future plan and us as the council moving forward. There's so much different aspects to community life. What makes people tick in the communities? What's the makeup of communities? Like a stock tech, like a profile of communities? Stanmore planning framework? If you try and click it on the city council website now, it doesn't exist anymore. Why isn't it there? About time it's renewed. We were the year before Winall planning framework. Maybe that's time for renewal for there as well. Facilities is lacking in communities. How do we come in with other partner groups, county council, adult education, the sort of aspects of trying to budget for families and trying to get some parenting groups going and all that sort of stuff, something for young people, not just the elderly. There's so much diverse actions that the council could be in direct involvement or not so much. Maybe funding grants or being a partner stakeholder in some groups and so forth in advisory capacity. That's what I would have liked to have heard tonight from the Cabinet members moving forward, which will actually give me some idea that actually you're taking the communities that we've got and existent in Winchester, not Stanmore, Winchester and the district seriously, that you are meaning what you're meaning in that third bullet point, that you're not just building homes, but you are building up communities and communities are made of people. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you councillor Scott. Do we have any other debate, Matthew, at all that you've seen?
Chair, we've got councillor Power for debate. Apologies, I missed councillor Horrell in the case of a question.
Okay. So councillor Horrell, did you have a question or debate?
Chair, you took my question. It was on the climate emergency. Thank you.
There was nothing else. Okay, fabulous.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Power, your debate, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I do take councillor Scott's point. It was very apparent that during the Covid crisis and continuing, settlements outside the city did not need much intervention from officers to support people. Those communities just built a support network. And communities are people and they feel they, they feel they're an integrated set. Everybody within that community gets supported by anybody who can help in whatever way. I don't think it's just for the council to do that though. I think it's a question of changing the mindset that we're all part of a unit. And I, I think there are multiple influences that need to be applied to do that. However, coming back to the paper before us, this is the second year running. I've been excited about council plan, which is unprecedented. Particularly the achievements that we've made. And let's remind ourselves that that was in the face of one year when there were three elections and the associated perdeperias and another year in which we have been in lockdown for virtually all the time. So yet again, I think it's time to congratulate the staff and the Cabinet on what we have delivered in the face of, I'm going to say it, unprecedented difficulties. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Power. Any further debate?
I can see nothing indicated, Chair.
So I just wanted to say that my thoughts on this are that there's an awful lot of loosely made claims. We supported this, we supported that, which by all accounts is incredibly vague and doesn't actually say what you did. And my experience of some of these things that you've supported was actually very little. So I feel that the claims in there perhaps need more clarification or just a little bold and a little more honesty about them. I think the amount of business that's actually been achieved is very clearly demonstrated by the lack of business that's been coming to full council. So either that's just the lack of business that's been achieved or lack of things of real significance. So I think it is quite bold and, and I don't think it's fair to mislead our residents in that way. So that would be my debate on this. So other than that, we've given this a good airing on the annual council refresh. There are some valid points to take away. So we shall now move on to item 11 to note the work programme for 2021. The next meeting of the scrutiny panel is the 11th of March. It's the final meeting of the year. It's the community safety partnership review with Chief Inspector John Turton, the district police commander. And we have the Q3 report from the performance panel coming to us as well. I just wanted to check that the committee is comfortable. We've had some nominations put forwards for the task and finish group on the mental health piece. I just wanted to say that we will allow our group leaders to identify the most appropriate people for that panel. And the thinking at the moment is that it will either be three or five people, dependent on the number of people that come forward and their diverse range of skills. So I just wanted to give an update on that. So we also have to note the latest forward plan of key decisions. So is everybody comfortable? They've noted that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our key business for this evening. And I thank you all. And for such a packed agenda, we only overran by 40 minutes. So I thank you all for your efforts in keeping this concise this evening. May I wish you all stay safe and a very good evening. Thank you.
Well, Chair, Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair.